I call the meeting of the city council to order on August 18th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Mayor Ann Hunt. To my left is council member Mark Vanderlinde, council member Erlene Donahue, council member Bob Christians, and council member Tyler Avens. Our city engineer, Paul Hornby, is at the end from WSB. On my right is our interim city administrator, Mike Barone, our finance director, Brian Grimm, our community development director, David Abel, and our city attorney, Ron Beatty. And Paul Falls is bringing me the persons to be heard. He is our director of public safety. Thank you. So, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Any changes?
Motion approved agenda.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to persons to be heard. I'm gonna just read the description once again. The city council invites residents to share new ideas or concerns related to city business. However, individual questions or remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker. No city council action will be taken, although the council may refer issues to staff for follow-up or consideration at a future meeting. The mayor may use discretion if speakers are repeating views already expressed or ask for a spokesperson for groups or individuals with similar views. Speakers should state their name and home address at the podium before speaking. We have Doris Crawford.
Doris Crawford, 3988 Turtle Road. I am just expressing some serious concerns I have about this upcoming election and how our current city council is being not portrayed as honest people. And I've been watching the city council meetings on YouTube, and I've seen Mark Vanderlinde being questioned and some underhanded innuendos, I should say. And I was recently made aware of a site called Minatrista 411. So I looked it up on the Internet, and it didn't take much for this to come up online. And it's a document, and it's the political committees and political funds reservation registration information. And it states David Koebe as the chairman and Karen Koebe as the treasurer. And in looking at the site, and this is all online, it's in black and white, you can see it, and it says, "Our mission is to provide information about city business and politics. This site will link you to credible media sources such as area newspapers and broadcasts of city council meetings. This site will expand over time, so check back again for more links and information." So I'm taking it that David Koebe is responsible for all the information that goes on the site, since he's the chairman. And when you go to one of the pages, it says, the headline is, sorry, I'm really nervous, Vanderlinde admits to ticket fixing. And when you watch the city council meetings, I've watched them twice, and Mark Vanderlinde states, "I wrote a letter saying I was confused," or something like that. He never, ever, ever states that he was trying to get a ticket fixed. And it says right here, I mean, this is the headline, "Admits to Ticket Fixing." And that really disturbs me. And it also reads in here, Notch, meaning Tom Notch, was cited again on 5/15/10 for the same violation, which means this ATV violation. This is documented in Minatrista Police Case 102522. The Hennepin County Court hearing officer issued a report stating that Notch presented a letter from Minatrista City Council member Mark Vanderlinde claiming that Notch had a permit for the city of Minatrista to operate the vehicle on roadways. No such permit had been issued. Based on this claim, the citation was dismissed. They read the letter that Mark Vanderlinde wrote, and it's on the tape, it's on YouTube. And he never, ever said that Tom Notch had a permit. He doesn't say that. This is out and outright lie. And in my opinion, it's defamation of character, and at the very least, it's harassment. And I know with the last election, there was a lot of mistruths and a lot of bad information and mudslinging and things that were not true. And I am hoping, like heck, I know this council has made a point to be transparent. I don't know what more they can do to, you know, putting all the meetings on YouTube, sending out questionnaires, allowing people to voice their opinion. I was here many, many meetings with the last council that was in office. We weren't allowed to speak. We wore buttons that said what our opinions were. And I am hoping that this next election does not go spiraling downward like the last one did.
Thank you, Doris.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I, Ron Grothe.
Ron Grothe, 3850 Enchanted Lane. And I'm back to remind you of our road. And I can start out again by saying thank you for the temporary road. It solved a problem that we certainly had. At this point, the problem is solved and the lake level's back down. And the, and I don't know if the appreciation is directed to the council, but the principal benefactor benefactors of the road are the citizens of Shorewood. Because beyond my house, there's about, I don't know, 15, 20 Minatrista homes, and then there's about 100 Shorewood homes. And so those homes come past my house on my temporary road.
Yeah, they have expressed their appreciation. Their mayor has written to our city thanking us.
Good. Because that's, well, so, at this point, there are two problems. The immediate one has to do with just, it's dusty, it's muddy, it's messy, and it is, it's gonna be that way until it's gone. So if there's any way of somehow remedying the dust off the road, that would be appreciated by the homeowners who are right on the road. And I don't know what that solution might be, but it's a problem. And the second issue is, of course, the removal of the road, which I understand is gonna be a mess and will require, has required a great deal of thought and planning and so forth. And my initial correspondence that I looked at after my wife talked to the city last week looked like you were kind of planning on late October. And I would plead with you to try to move it up if you at all can, because late October is almost winter. And we literally can't use our driveway. Means that I know there's two stretches of road that are temporary. And most of the people on the road that's farther down on the island, they have long driveways that go into their property. My driveway's on the road. My driveway is 100 feet of pave, pavers that's right on the road. I can't use it. I can't get my boats off the side of my house, I can't get my jet skis off, you know, wah wah. But nevertheless, I can't use it.
Yeah.
I can't use it for my relatives, I can't use it. So, the pleading is, as soon as we can remove that road, and then even just tar over whatever is there and make it usable again until some permanent remedy is discussed, the sooner the better.
Yeah, and Paul was going to address that later in the meeting.
Very good.
Enchanted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have a special presentation, financial update.
This is Brian. I told you he's a traffic cop tonight. Thanks, Mike. I'm a mayor and council. I'll just take a few minutes just to go through, this is on pages four through 11 of your packet. It's just basically the regular quarterly financial update. It actually goes through July of 2014, just the first seven months of the year. And I guess the overall theme is that things are tracking about where they should for this time of the year. Like I noted in the memo, the revenue collections are about 54 percent, and expenditures total are, we're about 58 percent as of the end of July. Both of those, you know, from looking back at previous years, as well as just, you know, going through some of the line items, are at where they should be. I guess then the, our, the last report that's attached is the cash and investments report. We have basically roughly 12 and a half million as of the end of July 2014. Some of that is in some unspent bond proceeds, still, you know, finishing up Kings Point Road and in the roundabout. So that number will come down, you know, a little bit by the time we get towards the end of the year. Otherwise, yeah, we have a couple of funds that have the cash deficits. It's our debt fund for our payments on the mound fire facility, and that's just the time indifference between, we haven't gotten our second half tax settlement in, as well as the roundabout debt fund. The property had division process earlier in the year, so they've paid their special assessments, the county hasn't passed them on yet based on just the timing of when the division was done. So otherwise, all our funds have positive balances, are where they should be. The revenue pages on page five of the packet, I've said, probably one of the other items to mention, I think our building permits are tracking pretty good. I think we've, you know, David maybe mentioned in the work session or something, I think we're at almost 50 permits for the year. So I think we're tracking well there. On the expenditure side, that's pages six through 10. I don't think there's anything really that sticks out as far as being out of line or anything. On the government buildings department, we've had some repairs, you know, there and some different things, but then that's offset by insurance proceeds, so that's where that number is higher. Otherwise, everything else, police and, you know, fire, we've paid three, three payments to, to mound and St. Bonnie's, so that's where that's at, 75 percent. I guess, yeah, if anyone has any, any other questions, I'll stand for those. Otherwise, it's just, yeah, the regular, you know, reporting process, just to keep the council and, you know, obviously up to date and involved in where we're at for the year, tracking our actual affairs and the budget, so.
I just had one question. It was under park areas?
Sure.
And it was under miscellaneous, Department 49020. What was that?
Oh, that's the, you're looking at, yeah, Department 49020. That's where we're paying the, we're paying the blurring, drive retaining wall out of more just unallocated, it's coming out of current fund balance. So we, we just sort of plugged it into that, it's sort of a unallocated, it's not really attributable to any department, but it's coming out of the general fund coffers, I guess.
Okay.
So that's, that's where that, yeah, and actually, I think we made another payment in August, and now that's like about 75,000, you know, that project's about 90,000.
90, about.
So that's what that is. Good question.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Otherwise, yeah, we usually get a motion just to accept the report.
To accept the report.
Make a motion to accept the report.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's 5-0, accepting. Okay, on our consent agenda, we have approved special minutes, but I just was going to correct that James Whisker does not have an H in his name.
Okay, we'll make the corrections. Thank you.
Okay, that was my only correction. Any other corrections to the minutes? No? Okay.
Motion to consent the agenda with the changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's 5-0. And now we're having a public hearing about the application of a portion of right-of-way of Lotus Drive as dedicated for the plat of Woodland Cove.
David, you are up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you may recall, your July 21st meeting, the city council entered into a preliminary agreement with Madamy Homes for their second phase of the Woodland Cove development. That preliminary agreement allowed them to do grading work only within that second phase, with the understanding that the final plat and application had been submitted and reviewed and would be brought forth to the city council yet this year. As part of that, the Phase Two does have a portion of the existing Lotus Drive located within that. Pursuant to state statute, staff did notice a public hearing for this August 18th meeting. Any vacation of a public right-of-way does require a public hearing, and what we'd be looking for tonight is council to hold a public hearing on the vacation of that portion. And then what we've asked the developer to do is convey a temporary easement then back to the city until which time the new alignment of Lotus Drive is in place, and then that will then vacate that temporary easement. So there will be right-of-way and access to property owners who use Lotus Drive. And I'll, I'll put the, on the screen for you, I'll put the area that we're, we're talking about here, if it comes up. It's not coming up. There we go. In between the two, the two red hash properties, both are this Phase Two area of Woodland Cove owned by the Woodland Cove Group. This is the specific easement document or legal description, if you will, of the area that is actually going to be technically vacated tonight, and then we'll turn around and get a temporary easement right over the top of that to allow for the road to be there and city to continue to maintain that road until which time the, the new Phase Two alignment, which likely won't be next year sometime when the new alignment is, is put in place. So with that, we're looking for council to hold that public hearing. Staff's recommendation is a motion to approve the vacation of that portion of Lotus Drive.
Okay. I'll open the, I hereby open the public hearing regarding the vacation of Lotus Drive. Anybody want to speak to this?
Yeah, thank you. My name's Larry Pray. I reside at 4340 Lotus Drive, right here in this curve, right here. I'm the only home on Lotus Drive, until you're up there. So the traffic that comes through here will, on this temporary drive, will have to pass my house, with gravel down. Okay? I don't think it's a very fair deal to build 100 homes and, yeah, what, 12 home cars? 12 cars a day? It's how many cars? A thousand cars a day? Gravel road? And I think David probably has an answer for this, because we talked about it. But I didn't hear anything said, so I want to make sure what's happening and where are they gonna pave and where are they not gonna pave?
Correct. Madam Mayor and council, Larry and I have had discussions about this, and Madamy has, has agreed to pave the road in front of Mr. Pray's house up to the corner as part of the Phase Two development. I did not bring it up tonight because it is not a condition of approval of the vacation, but it will be a condition of approval of the Phase Two final plat, which you'll be seeing by the end of this year. I've got a written agreement from Madamy to that, to that degree, and that will be a condition of approval, approval of the Phase Two final plat.
So one question, how far back will they pave?
It will be to the, to the corner, as you and I discussed.
To the corner?
Yep.
And then prior to my property line, will they pave that going back to where the?
Correct.
Temporary road? So there won't be asphalt and then gravel and then asphalt?
It will be all asphalt to the corner.
Okay. And then your concern was that the speed of that, they're gonna go too fast, and that's a 90-degree corner? And maybe better leave a gravel, which I don't agree with. I'd rather see them drive off the end if they're gonna drive that fast. My suggestion would be, I pull them out of the ditch every year, so, okay? They do it on the gravel. So my recommendation would be to consider lower speed limits in that area and enforcing them, and perhaps a couple of speed bumps to slow them down.
Sure.
And that's all I have to say. I didn't realize it wasn't part of this.
Do you want to cover how speed limits work?
And speed bumps.
And speed bumps.
Maybe Paul can help you there. Yeah, there, there is some outside agencies at play in, in terms of speed limits and the set speed limits there. But we certainly can, can look at different options and solutions, working with the developer, working with the city engineer, working with the police department, getting their, their mobile speed units out there telling speed and such, and continue to monitor that situation, so.
What is the current speed limit right there?
30.
It is 30.
It's 20, I think it occurred.
Yep.
Okay.
Slow down for that, but it's 20. It's 20. And I'd like to thank David for his assistance in, in talking with, with the developer, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? Okay. I hereby close the hearing on the vacation of Lotus Drive. Council, any questions?
No, I think David covered it very well. Thank you.
Okay. Looking for a motion? I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution deprecating a portion of the right-of-way of Lotus Drive.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. Okay, business items. We're moving on to Red Oak Development.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of council. Final plat application has been made for the plat that's known as Red Oak. The plat includes 59 single-family home sites with three outlots. As you may recall, we worked with a company called Source Land throughout the review process. They are the current owners of the site, and they have entered into a purchase agreement with a company called Ryland Homes. Ryland, or the Ryland Group, the Ryland Group will be the responsible party for the subdivision improvements, and will build the homes within the site. So the second portion of this agenda item, being the subdivision agreement, we're actually entering, entering into that with Ryland Homes, as they're, they are now the developers of the site pending tonight's action with city council. As part of your packet, there was background information dating back to 2009 with the history of this property, and then the series of events and meetings that not only you as city council, but the various commissions went through throughout this review process, which led us all the way up to the water main improvement project that bids were awarded at your last meeting in July, on July 21st. So there's an outline of, of the process that it has gone through to get to this point. Staff has reviewed the final plat application for conformity with our zoning regulations, also the conditions of the requirements of the preliminary plat approval. We do find that it is consistent with those conditions and city code, and what staff's recommendation is, is that council approve the final plat that is known as Red Oak. I'll again bring just the proposed plat, final plat, I should say, on, on the screen for the viewing audience. Again, this is 59 single-family homes. It was reduced, if you may recall, from 61 down to 59. We're at the, the minimum now, and as staff mentioned, it is consistent with our preliminary plat conditions and recommendations. So staff's recommendation is to approve the final plat as presented with the conditions outlined in your resolution.
And the conditions, just for clarification, are what Paul wrote up?
Correct. Well, there, there's 10 specific conditions in the resolution that approves the final plat, one of which is that they conform with the memorandum that Paul and WSB has presented, as well as any other outside agency.
I think that David covered that it's at the very minimal density that's allowed by the Met Council in, in the Musa District or our city. So we did reduce that density several years ago. Any questions about it? Any, I'm looking for a motion if there's?
I'll make a motion to approving the final plat, Red Oaks.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Okay, now we'll move on to the development agreement.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and members of council. As we do with any subdivision in the city of Minatrista, we enter into a subdivision agreement with the developer. This obligates the terms and conditions for private and public infrastructure that goes within the subdivision, also lays out the timeframes and other conditions that they must abide by throughout the development process. We also collect a letter of credit, which the city holds, that verifies that the improvements are going to be put in place. So there is no fiscal impact to the city with entering into this agreement. Again, something very typical we do with any of our new subdivisions. And as I mentioned earlier, this, this will be with Ryland Homes, being that they are now taking over the property, and their, their name will be on the plat. So with that, staff is recommending that the council approve the subdivision agreement between the city of Minatrista and Ryland Group for the plat known as Red Oak.
Any questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a subdivision agreement between the city of Minatrista and Ryland Group for the plat of Red Oak.
A development agreement?
Yes. Subdivision agreement.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now we're talking about the city code regarding stormwater discharge.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you may recall, several months ago, at a, one of our special meetings, we, we were talking about water quality and, and water quality in general within the city. One of the areas of concern being all the rain that we were having at the time, and looks like we're getting right now, is sub-pump discharge and some of the specific problems we've had over the years with it going on to public right-of-ways. The direction from council at the time was to revisit that ordinance and come back with some language that would toughen up our regulations on some pumps that discharge not only to right-of-way but to adjoining property owners, because that also has been an issue and a concern with people pumping to their neighbors' properties. We do have areas of the city where some pumps actually run 24/7, 365 days a year, which becomes very problematic in the winter with ice buildup, and also in the summer with allergy buildup, moss being built up on the streets, and it really have gotten some complaints about that. So what staff has done is worked with the planning commission on some draft language. They, they have looked at this draft ordinance twice. The, the ordinance amendment that you see in your packet, it was their, their recommendation to city council for approval, which essentially does prohibit people from pumping their sub-pumps directly onto a, a public right-of-way. The idea being that generally there's 10 to 15 feet from the edge of the street that's technically considered public right-of-way. So if you cut that sub-pump hose back, not right up to the street, it allows time for it to filtrate into the grass and it doesn't directly go onto the street. So the language in the draft ordinance speaks to that. And then also, on a case-by-case basis, would allow for Public Works Director or City Engineer to look at actually directly piping that into the stormwater system per approval by the city engineer and Public Works Director. So the recommendation, again, from the planning commission is to adopt ordinance 420. That was reviewed by the planning commission. Staff's also recommending adoption of ordinance 420 with any suggested changes that the council might have to it. This evening, we have an ordinance and then a resolution also for title and summary for your consideration.
Any comments about the proposed code change?
Yeah, I just have a question. On the surcharge section, it crossed out 75 per month and it put as set forth by the city's fee schedule. Is that? Is that already out?
We, we do, uh, know, the idea there being... What the planning commission's discussion centered around was, um, it's harder to change, you know, the ordinance like this all the time, as opposed to the fee schedule, something you do every year. And they had concerns about, um, you know, actually charging people for something like that. So, um, wanted to more recommend that being the fee schedule, um, which, again, is something we do every year.
Yeah.
Okay.
This has been a particular problem at Hunter's Crest.
Correct.
Yeah. I think they did a good job on it. Do you guys have any suggestions or comments? Well, since, I'll make a motion to approve it as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so now we need to authorize publication of ordinance four-twenty by title and summary?
So, a moment.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay, number C, or letter C, accepting quote for the demolition of structures on the Gillespie property at fourteen-twenty Westwood Drive.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, as you may recall, we, the council has been exploring, uh, several different areas in which, uh, would be, uh, the, the most cost-effective method in removing these, the structures on the Gillespie property that was donated to the city, uh, for park, for a public park purpose. Um, the last, uh, method that we explored was, uh, asking the mound fire department if a controlled burn would be a viable option. Um, after their analysis of the site, they can, they, uh, concluded that, that this site would not be appropriate for them to do a controlled burn from, from a safety standpoint and a number of other reasons. Um, that has led us to where we are today with the traditional demolition of the structures that are on that site. Uh, staff solicited quotes from three different vendors, um, all of which who did submit. Uh, the quotes range with the high quote at, uh, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, and a low quote from Pride Construction and Escavating at seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, staff is, uh, looking, uh, for a, a, a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the low quote, uh, from Pride Construction and Escavating to do the demolition, um, of the structures on the Gillespie property. And just from an update standpoint, um, we did get the, uh, asbestos, uh, surveyor, uh, in, in the property Wednesday of last week, so the samples have been taken, they've been sent out, uh, to the testing facility. We have not received the results back yet, uh, but that, that progress is in motion. And once we get the survey back, uh, we'll be looking to get quotes on, uh, having a company actually get the asbestos out of the site before the demolition can occur.
Okay. Any questions? Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting a quote from Pride Construction for demolition and removal of the Gillespie property.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I'm abstaining, 'cause it's a relative.
Oh, okay, four oh. One abstention.
I wouldn't want to be accused of doing anything unethical.
Okay. All right. Now, number D is, uh, approve the final sale of the two thousand fourteen A bonds, refunding bond issues two thousand five A and two thousand seven A. I believe this is Mr. Hagan.
And Mr. Grimm.
Yep, yeah.
And Mr. Grimm, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
Mr. Grimm.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'll introduce, uh, Todd Hagan from our, um, our financial consultant, Ellers and Associates. He'll, he'll be here to talk about, I think everyone's got one of these at their desk, so that's the main thing we'll be talking off of there is, um, versus the information that's in the packet. This is updated for the, uh, the bid results and the, um, really good savings we got on this issue and all that. I guess Todd, uh, talk on the, uh, the details of the report.
Thanks, Brian.
Great.
Yeah, don't take the wind out of my sails.
Yep, yeah.
I see it's sunny out behind me now, so it's good. Uh, it was a great day to sell bonds today. Um, again, Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates, your, uh, bond consultant at, uh, beautiful downtown Roseville. Um, you know, today, uh, by, uh, up to ten o'clock, we received bids on these refinancing bonds. Um, I was here on, uh, Becky was here on July twenty-first to set this bond sale up, uh, to come back with bids for today. Um, we're refinancing a two thousand five A bond and a two thousand seven A bond for an interest cost saving. So, we're keeping the term the same and, um, not extending, uh, anything, uh, or, uh, or shortening up the bond issue, just basically apples to apples on this because the market is so good, uh, to sell bonds. We want you folks to, uh, enjoy those savings, and I think you did today. Um, we received six bids, kind of to cut to the chase here as far as the bond issue is concerned. Um, we're happy with the six bids. Uh, if you look in, a couple pages in, you'll see the, uh, how the bidding came, came out. Um, the winning bid was, uh, City Securities Corporation out of Indianapolis, Indiana, um, and that came in at a one-point-eight-four-nine-three, uh, true interest rate. Um, the second bid, uh, the cover bid, second to the best bid, was at Baird, out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, uh, at one-point-nine-seven percent. And then United Bankers Bank out of Bloomington, uh, local here at two-point-oh-two percent. And Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, again, local, at, uh, two-point-one-seven percent. Uh, the, uh, the next one is Raymond James and Associates out of Saint Petersburg, Florida. I think, uh, Brian and I talked that they've purchased some of your bonds in the past. Um, didn't win this one, um, two-point-three-five percent, but appreciate their participation. And a place called Basque Incorporated out of Dallas, Texas, at two-point-five-three percent. So, if you kind of put that into an interest difference, uh, by bidding this out, um, and not just going with one, and it might have been the, the last bid there, you, you know, you're sort of saving a little over forty-six thousand dollars there too by, by bidding out the, the project itself. So, we wouldn't know who, who was all interested in it if we didn't go out for bids. So, uh, kudos to the council to go, uh, and send this out, 'cause it's a pretty vanilla deal out in the market, and it's, uh, with your fantastic double-A plus rating and, uh, with the stable outlook. Uh, that really attracted some bids from, you know, outstate, obviously. So, it was neat to see, uh, six bids, and that's a lot of bids, you know, considered in this market. So, before we get to the rating part, um, we had the ability to adjust the bond issue today, too. Um, that best bid, uh, gave us, uh, interest rate, uh, that actually is higher than the re-offering yield, and we talked about a premium bid, uh, before. So, they did offer a premium bid, um, and you can see the re-offering yield is lower than the rate. Uh, what they did is gave us more money, um, actually almost eighty thousand dollars more than we needed. We don't need any more than we need on a refunding bond. Uh, and they didn't really take any, uh, discount or, or basically any fee. So, in exchange for a little higher interest rate, uh, we actually lowered the bond issue, uh, by about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And that includes some prepaid special assessments that Brian and I talked about this morning, um, that have kind of accumulated, I think, in the two thousand seven A, um, debt account. And this is a good time to shake that tree and, and use those, you know, put the, put that cash to work, basically, uh, at this point. So, when you add up, um, the cash contribution from the city, uh, and some, you know, no fee, basically, for the underwriter, and they gave us more money than we needed, and the cost of issuance, yes, went down at least twenty-four hundred bucks. Um, and I'm sure that was us. Uh, that, when you add all that up and subtract it, uh, we lowered the bond a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, so it's not a million two forty-five anymore, it's a million eighty. So, and that basically equated to a higher, uh, savings overall. Instead of seventy-four thousand dollars and some change, overall, uh, over the life of the bond issue, it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars now. So, it's nice to break that hundred thousand dollar mark, and, um, so that, that helped, uh, considerably in the bond issue. So, I think basically, too, you followed the market, 'cause if you look at the bond buyer trend, uh, between then and now, it's gone down about fourteen basis points, and that's really what your, your true interest cost reflected, was like fifteen basis points. So, you know, you're, you're striking while the iron's hot here, and the rates have been going down, and, and that's great, 'cause we don't know, you know, when they're gonna go up, when and if they're going to. But, uh, crystal ball says they're probably gonna go up sooner or later. How's that for being specific? So, that, that was a, was a great, great bond sale, and that's sort of how we adjusted it. I mean, the closing is September eleventh, and, you know, we take care of calling in the old bonds and, uh, substituting, uh, these for the new ones. So, we had a really, uh, really good rating call, uh, a week ago today, at about three o'clock, with Mike and Brian on the phone and a couple representatives from Standard and Poor's. Um, I was on the phone, and Becky from Ellers and Associates were on the phone as well. And it was about, I don't know, forty-five minutes to an hour conference call, but we do load them up with as much information ahead of time as possible in order to, you know, minimize the questions on the rating call. And, and it really, uh, was, uh, it really tracked their new methodology and criteria that they put into play after your two bond issues for, you know, the roundabout and, and King's Point Road there. So, we really didn't know what we were gonna get, um, as far as a, a bond rating. Uh, but you're, you know, one notch below a triple-A already, and you basically have the same rating the state of Minnesota has. So, you're double-A plus, and, and you're right at the top, and you did stay there, uh, to cut to the chase on that. You're a double-A plus, stable, uh, rating. Uh, if you look at the report, there are some bullet points that just sort of summarize, um, summarize how this played out. Uh, you have a, a very strong economy with, you know, Minneapolis and Saint Paul being right around the corner here. Uh, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, um, providing very strong cash levels, strong management conditions, adequate budgetary performance, and, and you've got some weak debt and contingent liability positions. I think that's what's keeping you down from a triple-A. But it's really nice getting on a rating call with, you know, strong financial management in city Minatrista. It's really fun to, to talk to these, these folks and kind of talk about the lake area, the Western Hennepin County kind of economy, which is, you know, starting to kind of obviously pick up before the rest of the, uh, metro areas. And, um, uh, and high income levels and things like that. But, you know, you've, with the growing community, you also have, you know, more, more bonds to issue, you know, and, and that's sort of gonna keep you down probably from that one-notch triple-A, uh, until, uh, until some of those bonds drop off. And/or it doesn't hurt to refinance them either, you know? So, uh, we do what we can, um, in that, in that regard. So, you are, um, you know, if you look at, uh, they do hint a little bit in the, in the report itself, and, you know, what does very strong mean, you know, when you look at, at this, and you can read the paragraphs in between the lines. But, you know, very strong economy, uh, that's, that's really the highest level you can get. Very strong budgetary flexibility is, is the highest they, they give you. Very strong liquidity, um, and that's really, uh, really available cash, you know? And that's the highest, um, highest they can give you. Um, I mean, to back up to the budgetary flexibility, uh, that's, you know, that's basically, um, you know, your general fund balance is what, is what that is. So, flexibility and liquidity, those are indications of how much money you folks have set aside, which offsets, obviously, uh, any of the, any of the, the, the lower, the lower scales here. Um, adequate budgetary performance, uh, that's in the middle, you know, that's right in the middle. Uh, it's probably a, maybe, you know, I, I don't work for Standard and Poor's, but it might be a three, you know, and, and a one's the best, right? And the five's probably the worst, so it's, it's a scale from one to five. So, you know, probably maybe a three, you're right in the middle there, and that's basically kind of how you operate, uh, throughout the year, you know? And they don't subtract, you know, for one-time capital expenditures, things that are unforeseen like that, planned a little bit, but, you know, if you have a capital outlay that's a one-time snapshot, it's not a, it's not a, you know, a penalty. Uh, but that really is kind of the roadmap of, you know, some of the takeaway from here is just how, how you operate, um, you know, throughout, throughout the year. And I think that's what they mean by budgetary performance. Uh, management conditions, uh, strong means, you know, almost the highest. So, you're, you know, you're probably almost a number one there. And, uh, and then, basically, the strong institutional framework, that's just the city of Minatrista being in the state of Minnesota, which is different than other states, um, and you have, you know, different opportunities here, uh, than other states, and it's for a population that's greater than twenty-five hundred people. So, you know, not a lot you can do about the economy, and not a lot you can do about the institutional framework, uh, that is, is what it is. So, yeah, it was a great, uh, bond sale, I just wanted to summarize that. You know, we don't have Standard and Poor's coming over here every day to, you know, review their report, and we just do, try to do the best we can to interpret what, what they've got. Um, you know, they're out of Chicago, they, they put this stuff in a, in a machine, they have a committee, they talk about you, they try to get as much positives to offset any negatives as they can, and they don't want to set you up for a fall either. So, it's, uh, that's a great rating, and it was a great bond sale, so.
Thank you.
And if, the, the action would be to pass the resolution, uh, bond resolution, um, from Kennedy and Graven, if you don't have any questions, but I'm here for questions, too, if you folks have any, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, so just the one thing that, as Todd noted, so the resolution on those in your packet had the one million two hundred and forty-five thousand. That's been lowered based on those items, you know, he referenced to...
Million eighty.
One million, yep, eighty thousand. So, I guess, yeah, the action would be the res- resolution authorizing issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment of one million eighty thousand general obligation refunding bond, series two thousand fourteen A.
So, a moment.
Second.
Did you have a question?
Do we need to do a public hearing?
No. I think we should be very proud of the fact that we're one notch short of a triple-A rating. I think that's due to our good staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And Brian, our awesome financial advisor.
If I, if I had a hat, I'd take it off to you. Thank you. Yeah, 'cause it's a team effort, so.
Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a quick signature from?
Yes.
Madam? Number signature, please, the county.
I'm sure. Thank you, Todd.
Thanks so much for the business and the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, uh, we're going to do the, adopt the reimbursement resolution regarding the water treatment plant project.
Oh, it's Madam Mayor, council, I'll take that one. Also, this, um, item is on, uh, pages one sixty-seven to one sixty, or one sixty-five to one sixty-seven of your packet. Um, this came, um, about just, you know, with the, uh, the water treatment plant project moving forward. Um, we do have a reimbursement resolution that's on file, but I think it's, it's good to update every so often, and especially with a more specific, um, project, you know, like, like this. So, um, what's attached in your, um, in the packet on pages one sixty-six and one sixty-seven is a, uh, resolution that we prepared, um, with the help of, uh, our bond counsel, Kenny and Graven, that, uh, basically, uh, allows us the, uh, ability to reimburse ourselves through, and we're planning to use the Minnesota PFA loan process, and you'll know about, more about that in the, uh, coming month or so here. But, um, right now, our estimated maximum principal amount is about sixteen million. That, um, can be changed as we move along in the process, but, um, we just need, uh, need to have this adopted, um, and have this on file, so we, uh, make sure we reserve the right to reimburse ourselves for, for the project, so.
In, in the event that we're bonded by the state? And we've already spent the dollars?
Correct, yes.
Yes. Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the reimbursement resolution regarding the water treatment plant project.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Okay. Our next item is claims. Did we change kennel providers?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, no, we have not.
Okay. I just didn't remember JP Cook. It says kennel charges?
I would have to...
It's on, uh, page one seventy-one. Yeah. Yeah, it just, I didn't recognize the JP Cook.
Uh, JP Cook is not the, uh, the kennel that we use. I, I don't know why that name is on there. It must be some reference. It's a, that's the dog license, I think, is the, might be the name that it was put under. I'm not sure, I'd have to research that.
Okay.
But we still use the same kennel services.
That could be purchasing of new dog licenses, and the number, yeah, the finance number comes up as kennel charges.
Oh. Oh.
You know what I'm saying? It's in the same category, it's all the dog related.
It might possibly be the supplies that we use to issue dog licenses. That might be the name of the company.
That's probably what it is.
And it probably just comes out of the kennel charge line item in the budget.
Okay.
Would be my best guess without researching it.
That was my only question.
I have a question about check number oh five six two nine five to a Konya Ford Mercury. I know in the CIP plan, there was a talk about a truck for a Public Works. And I see here we have spent thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars for a two hundred and five, two thousand fifteen Ford Super Duty truck. When was this authorized?
It was originally in the 2014 budget. And then we also had on, on the last meeting, we had the, the, on the consent agenda, we had the, to amend the Public Works CIP. We had sold the Greater for a hundred thousand more than, for twenty thousand more, for a hundred and twenty thousand versus a hundred. So, this was on, one of the items on that list of, of that agenda item was to, I think originally Public Works had budgeted for a truck that was less than the thirty-eight thousand, but they found that it wasn't what they really, you know, needed. So, with that extra funds, they're just pretty much taking that money from the Greater sale and applying it to, and they had a list of items that was at that last council meeting. So, that's, this was one of those items on that list.
Any other questions? Look for a motion?
Motion to approve the claims.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, council reports, we are going to meet with Dr. Byer tomorrow.
Correct.
To discuss possibly using the WRA park as a potential water treatment plant site. That's my only update. Mark?
I have none.
Arlene?
I have nothing.
Bob?
In going and, and looking at the WRA for the possibility of water plant. I have to get a little closer here. Looking at the WRA for the water, centralized water plant, I know the location would be really good. I don't think it's gonna work. I think we need to look at the property that the city purchased four, five years ago. I think there's enough property here that we could take a look and see if it's more workable to put it on the city property here versus that WRA. I just don't believe, based on what I know about the WRA, and obviously, as you know, I've been extremely large supporters of that for years. I think we're gonna have to take a look at it. We can meet with Dr. Byron, but I think that's gonna be a dead issue.
Okay, well, the second selection for a site was this campus, so.
A lot of the funding for WRA is handled by my family, so I don't think that's gonna happen.
Would it affect the, I don't think that it would affect what goes on there, it would be on the back end.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but I, I think we, it would be highly controversial. I, I would really like to take a look at, look at some of the property that the city owns that was purchased back when the facilities were built, the public safety building and the building that was worked. I think it's from a central standpoint, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be feasible to do. There's enough land to do it, am I, am I correct in saying that?
I think there's probably enough land at either site. I don't think it's the size of, of that, the land that we're looking at. I think when we have our meeting tomorrow and then when Bolton Make is, they're gonna do soil borings. I mean, I think a lot of it may be determined for us by what we get as results, so.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I wonder, I'm, I'm not trying to throw mud on it here, I'm just letting you know that I think that's gonna be an uphill battle going with WRA.
All right, so now it's, and Tyler?
No updates.
Any updates? Okay, staff reports?
Just a few things to talk about, kind of heard it, heard it brought up a couple of times. We did have a kickoff meeting on October eighth with members of Bolton Make, WSB, and city staff, and city council member, Mayor Hunt being there. The, the purpose of the meeting on the eighth of August was to kind of talk, talk about the overall scope of the water treatment project. As you heard, there's a couple of sites that are under consideration, that's to be determined. The other things we talked about were where we might have, have to put the, or figure out the routes for the piping, size and scale of the actual water plant, a funding mechanism and schedules. And then I did hear from, didn't talk, we traded voicemails, Seth Peterson and I today spoke. And we're gonna try to probably have another meeting, I think, next week with the week after, so. So, to be determined on, on the next meeting from this group. So, it was a good, good kickoff meeting and so we're, they gave away a lot of groundwork here and kind of where we're gonna go.
Enchanted Lane.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We did talk about this in previous meetings, I thought maybe the best way to go about this is put this in a memo, in a staff report. But at least in the process, I'm looking at, number one is removing the temporary roadway that's out there today. And I think I loosely said we want to get that done before freeze-up. Obviously, I might be able to get that done much sooner than that. We are contacting contractors to try to draw up some interest. The thing with the contractors, we need to make sure they have access to trucks and that they have equipment to remove the rock. And we have to find some of those that are interested in actually doing the work. That's been one of the biggest tasks. I know there's two of them for sure that are interested, so I have those on my list already, and I'm looking for others. The, so after we get the rock removed, then we have to go through and take a look at what the pavement condition is underneath it. And then determine whether or not we can just go out and patch it and, I'll say limp it through the winter, and then maybe readdress it in the spring after, during pot hole season. And then maybe some of those dollars that we have set aside for, from FEMA, so we try to address some of these road repairs, we can apply that to our, to a permanent fix, so there may be some funding we can offset there to do that. And then look at, here over the late fall, early winter, look at the feasibility and so forth of making permanent repairs in the floodplain. And if, and the council wants us to look at the entire project with Shorewood from border to border and beyond, we'll do that as well. We'll work with Shorewood to do that. So, that's the synopsis of how we're approaching the project, and we do hope to have a quote package out here in the next week, so.
So, is this something that our Public Works can help with?
We did talk about that. Right now, they've got so many things going on, they did not think that their staff could handle it.
Okay.
One of the difficulties with this project is, once they start, they need to keep moving.
Right.
And trying to do it in an efficient manner. We did talk about even, I believe, one of the residents, I think Mr. Groppe, may have even mentioned that taking it off at night to disturb as little traffic as possible. There's a lot of traffic that goes through there.
We know.
And, and in order to try, when, once the contractor is working, then pull traffic back while they can load a few trucks and then backdrag the materials so we can ramp it, so cars can get up and get out. Or do we look at working with the neighbors adjacent to each of these zones and do it at night? There'd be a noise issue there, but, but less traffic. If you have a preference, I'd certainly like to know what your thoughts are on that.
Well, what do the neighbors think?
Well, I think I've had at least one say that maybe nighttime would be a good time to do it. I, my preference would be like to be able to look at it during the daytime. So, if something does go awry, we have Public Works on staff that can, can help address some issues. We have engineering on staff that can address issues. So, for me, doing it during the day is probably a better alternative. And then less disturbing to the neighbors at nighttime.
And then we keep the rock, right?
Correct, Public Works wants the rock. They have, they definitely have the areas they can use that rock.
Any other questions? Okay.
I would add to that, if you do have some local contractors that you're aware of that also have, may have an interest and fit that criteria, certainly send that information to me and I'll make sure to quote package when we send them to them.
Do you have any idea how much this is gonna cost?
I do not. It's really gonna be trucking costs and this could be hourly by the truck. What we do is we'd set up a contract by the cubic yard, you know, so that we can track how many loads go out. We don't have to scale, have a scale on hand to, to weigh the trucks. I think it's just better to come up with an average volume of each truck that's gonna be hauling and have it hauled out by the cubic yard, paying by the cubic yard, not worry about the type of material side of it, but so they'll be hauling it off the island and delivering it here to Public Works.
Would this be included in the cost of repair that you would cover?
Yes.
Just, so we're perfectly clear, at this point FEMA has not included Hennepin County in the declaration. That process is going much slower than, than we had anticipated, so I'm just pushing forward the information that I have. But at this point, they have not been included, and we've been told and told and told that they believe that is going to happen. However, that dollar amount keeps moving around. We've, we've provided our preliminary damage assessments numbers to the county to forward to FEMA. With that said, we don't have a total because Enchanted Lane is by far our most expensive piece, and we can't guess. And therefore, those numbers have not been included because we won't know the, the extent of the damage until that rock is removed. So, certainly if they have not made a declaration or a decision one way or the other, by the time we get the rock removed, we'll be able to push that information forward to them. Unfortunately, they may or may not make that decision prior to getting that rock off of there. But I'll certainly keep you posted. We're hopeful that they will make that declaration, in which case, a lot of the expense, the damage would be reimbursed through the state and federal governments. But if they don't, then that'll be a different issue. But I'll, I'll keep you posted when that information becomes available.
Mike, would we need to do another one of those intent to reimburse for this project if it's gonna take a while?
Could, I don't know if that's.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Could bring some of that.
We can bring that back.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so that we have the ability to move it along well? That's true, yeah. Figure decisions are. Yeah, I guess, yeah, the main thing would be whether if, whether or not we're gonna need to sell, sell bonds for.
Yeah, I mean, that's a bond concept.
Oh, okay.
So, unless we're selling bonds.
Yeah. We're probably not gonna sell a bond, no. Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, got it. But is there any other kind of resolution you have to do so that you can be reimbursed? That's not bond, but, okay, you, you think we're good?
Well, I don't, I don't know, Madam Mayor, I don't know what the FEMA requirements are, but other than, I mean, the reimbursement, the type of reimbursement resolution you adopted tonight for the water treatment plant doesn't make any sense in, in this context.
I know, but is there something that we have to do so that we, other than keep track of our costs and submit them to FEMA? Is there any other form or process that we need to be aware of?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the short answer to that is no. We have, I've already documented what we have to date as well as, with, along with Public Works. Gary has been, I guess, instrumental in getting me a lot of those costs, so I'm working closely with him. That data's already been turned over to FEMA in a kind of a preliminary sense. It's being used now to make a, collectively make a decision as to whether or not Hennepin County will be included in that declaration. If they are, then essentially that process will start over in a very detailed fashion, and then we'll be able to recoup those costs through that process. And so, I will work through that process step by step once that declaration is made. So, we're already in, in, in line for that to occur, once they make the declaration. If they don't make it, then at that point, we're, there won't be any reimbursement. But I'm being told that they're hopeful that that will happen, so I'm remaining optimistic.
Okay.
You, Paul, do you know what Shorewood's got in mind?
I think they're waiting to see what we do. I shouldn't say it that way. What they're gonna do is they, they hauled out a lot of tubinous millions, and I believe they're going to take, pull that material off the roadway. They're more interested in long-term, looking at the long-term solution, so we don't have to keep doing this.
I think we are too.
Yeah, so they, they took care of their own, yeah, all that themselves.
Yes.
Okay, so.
But they didn't have the expense that we did.
No, no, not. I just thought if they were gonna do it and if they were looking for a contractor, if you get one contractor between both cities, you might get a little bit better discount.
Yeah, I think their impact was a lot more than ours was, so they handled it in their Public Works department.
Okay. All right, I guess our next item is the stormwater drainage priorities.
At the last, at the last meeting, council asked me to take a look at the priorities of the stormwater items that I prepared in a map format. The ones that I had on that, the items I had on that map, there were ten items, I actually added another one. But you were, but you were aware of it, that's one of those that we'll have to take care of here in 2014. That was the, if you look back to the map, number eleven is that South Bay Drive sewer washout that we had.
Right.
Yeah, we are also working on a package to put that back together. I think the last update I gave you is that does not need to meet the criteria for a dam. That helps us out tremendously, it reduces the amount of design. I do have somebody taking a look at what we need to do when there's, pack that material back in there, so it doesn't do this again. Although, keep in mind, it was under some extreme conditions, but I understand from Public Works, we have had some erosion issues in that area before. So, we want to try to reduce that. There is a temporary pumping station that is, is a bypass pump for that section of sewer now. And we need to have that out of there, obviously, before freeze-up. And we plan to have this one as well taken care of before that. Right now, we do not have an estimate of cost, but we are putting together a bid package to get that out for quotes. Most of the, these, I thought, were fairly high priority, and that's why we put them on the list. And so, we did look at taking care of these between the fall of 2014 and end of 2016, at least, in a, in a format where we can look at it and look at alternatives, where the council, council can decide whether we should go forward with it or not. I tried to break them up too, on the categories such as localized flooding for property and our structure. So, Enchanted Lane is obviously the highest priority one on there. The second one, looking at the Morning View Drive, this is the Hoffman drainage problem. We already looked, we looked at, and we should be bringing back some alternatives for yet here in the next month. And so, that is progressing. There's also a very similar situation up on Hardscrabble Circle. That property owner that contacted us there, that's the Giorgini family, and it's very similar to the Hoffman family. I just put a brief description for you on each one of those, so you guys, so you can know who they are. And then there's Mr. Hosmer was in on the Jennings Cove Pond, that's another one we look at, trying to resolve here in 2015. And then there's also another property owner, Mr. Engel, we met down on Halsted Avenue. That's a, there's an area there that is, I believe, zoned for multiple family or townhomes, a higher density. It's vacant land, but there's quite a bit of water that's going down through the property there, very tight corridors between the houses. And I believe in this last, at least this last June, there was, they did experience some water in their, in the structure through the garage and in the house. So, that was one that I also think we have to take a, a look at between 2015 and 2016. We looked at some erosion issues, the South Bay Drive washout. I know, I think there were some photos that I sent out, or that Mike had sent out to, to each of you. That one is probably the worst one, the highest priority, especially because there's a sanitary sewer involved in that one. Another one is the Trillium Bay stormwater outfall. If any of you had a chance to go down and take a look at that, there's a good volume of material that got washed down the side slope. It's not, in my opinion, it's not affecting any structures nearby, but the longer we leave that, the more, the worse that erosion's going to become. That one has a very difficult access. It's, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be an easy project to repair. The Game Farm Road erosion, that was the, there's a horse trail along the roadway that we were working with the property owner to try to maybe regrade and redirect some water so that it doesn't go down the horse trail, wash it out, and it's happened repeatedly. Also looked at some storm sewer cover repairs. There's, again, the Morning View Drive, there's a storm sewer pipe that needs to be, it's basically collapsing on itself. There's this, the storm sewer in the street and then goes through between properties, and that really needs to be replaced. We looked at lining it, and it doesn't look like lining will be a, a good solution. There's also the Loring Acres Stormwater Pond, the outlet for that, there's, again, some storm sewer pipe that, that one might be able to be lined. It was plugged, I think Public Works spent a few weeks trying to get that one cleared. We were able to do that, so it's, it's working in a maintained fashion, but that one likely will be lined. And then the Highway seven, Marywood. And then the, um, Highway Seven, Marywood Lane Pond, although we did talk about this one a little bit, but that one is going to be a mind-dye issue, so that one's really off the list.
Can I ask you about, uh, going back to erosion on forty-four, um, is Hennepin County taking care of that, do you know?
Um, they've taken some temporary measures, they still have some things to do out there. I don't know what their status is on, on getting that complete, but that's Hennepin County, they would be doing that work.
Okay. But you haven't heard anything?
No.
Okay.
So on a Highway Seven in Marywood, what happened there?
It looks like what may have happened is there may have been some, uh, there's a, an old, uh, corrugated metal pipe underneath Highway Seven, and the, there's a connection point that wasn't very good on, uh, underneath the turn lane, and I don't know what the circumstance were behind it. It looks like the water that discharged through that corrugated pipe flowed outside the, the new storm sewer, it came out and washed out the material along the, uh, structure in the pond. So basically, when you looked at the, when you looked at the outlet structure for the pond, there was no soil around it, it just looked like a tower in the middle of the bank. So, uh, Public Works has packed that material back in, and then mind-dye was to address the, that connection there. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Reminder of upcoming meetings, does that mean mine?